Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to the May 20th, 2014 Village of New Falls Planning Board meeting, 7:04, and I am calling the meeting to order. My name is Walid Swatman. I'm the Chair of the Village Planning Board. Other members present this evening are John Lutten, on that right, Liz Harsho, Michael Zerler, and Richie Stephens. Our Attorney is George Rogan has, and our Secretary is Rogan, Rose Olddonal. On the agenda tonight is a continuation of a public hearing for PB 1307. We have an application called PB 1403, which is at 51 Main Street, a mixed-use restaurant and apartment. We have a site plan for a new project, including new buildings and site improvements. And we have a ZBA referral that we began hearing the last meeting. We have some more information about it and more if you need it, but we will talk about that too. Then we have some other business that no one has interested us, as policy wants. So, may I have a motion to reopen the public hearing? It isn't reopen, is it? What is it?
Continue.
Okay. For PB 1307, this is the 46 Church Street, change number of bedroom apartments.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any members of the public wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, seeing none. I got to think and close it before we do the other thing. Should we keep it open? This is this.
Oh, sure.
Close it, close, okay. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We sent Mr. Johnson, the applicant, a letter requesting that he deliver the items that we have been asking him for, for a couple of months, to make his applications complete, eligible for our review, and he has not done that. Did he actually answer the letter?
Uh, no, I spoke with him on the phone.
Okay. And he indicated, well, nothing.
He's not interested.
Okay. So, in the letter, we said that if he did not provide us with the requested information, we would consider his application to have been abandoned, and I have here a resolution of abandonment. And I will move to make this resolution by saying it's hereby resolved by the planning board of the Village of New Falls that said application by John Johnson, on behalf of Church Street Commons LLC, for site plan approval is hereby deemed abandoned, and that should the applicant wish to file for a new application for this site, you'll be required to pay your own full application fee, and that's for a new application. And be further resolved that the Secretary to the Planning Board is hereby authorized and directed to send a letter to the applicant with a copy of this resolution. May I have a second tonight, please?
Second.
Mr. Lutten, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, welcome to you. You have this, I'll give you this.
Yeah.
This too. I'll be happy to sign the one that you type up. Okay. We're missing those lights. I can turn them off. Keep them going. There you go. Nice. I could put glasses on, too.
Oh, this really helps.
There we go.
Okay.
Sure. Do it again.
Do it again.
Mr., did you pronounce it big glass?
Big glass.
Big glass. Just a little stroke. Why don't they all do that? Okay, so this is, Richie and Rich, come up here.
Okay.
So you folks came here, got the exact meeting date, but end of April, I think. I have the first, yeah, end of April. With a, and we had a pre-application meeting.
Yes.
And, excuse me, Rogan, print out the memo from Brett about...
We can't read yet.
Uh, yeah, we did. It's all right. We've already seen it, and I think I read it for the record last time. Okay, so, I have not yet read what our attorney has said about this. George, rather than me reading it, can I ask you to...
I'll be able to summarize it.
Summarize, that'd be great.
What I've done is essentially confirm what Rich has sent to us in his application form. Essentially, first of all, that this is in the B2 district, the core business district, and that in that core business district, the restaurant use is a primary, principal permitted use, and also an apartment is a principal permitted use. Is, in fact, a mixed-use apartment above first floor consisting of not more than three bedrooms is a primary, principal primary use permitted in the district. So both of those are subject to site plan approval as part of this building. The mixed-use building requires a special use permit specifically under this, under the uses allowed in the B2 district, so we have a combination of a site plan for the building and a special use permit for the building.
Right.
On the short environmental assessment form we got, there were a couple minor errors, I would call them, just to have it correct before it gets sent on to other agencies. This is a question that everybody gets wrong on the DVC form because it's a badly written question. Number one, does the proposed action only involve legislative adoption of a plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? And you checked yes, but it does not involve legislation. The point of that question was to skip everything else and move down.
Oh.
But since it does involve, the answer should be no, it's not just legislative action. Number two is, does the proposed action require a permit? The answer to that is yes. So yes, no should be reversed in those two. But that's a no consequence, really, because you have answered all the questions anyhow. I think the only other question I had, would there be a proposed substantial increase in traffic at the present levels? You have no. There's no question about parking on this form. That's the closest you get, and you might just want to say, might not want to say yes in terms of traffic, but parking is obviously an essential issue. I would have said yes there.
At the, which number does that, the traffic one?
How can you copy of what George said?
And then on question 14, that should be checked, urban, in terms of habitat type for species, there are species that are urban, including pigeons.
Me like that.
Cockleheads, and so on. Then, in the parking requirements, I summarized the requirements, which you have correctly summarized as a, one parking space for each of three seats devoted to service, two spaces for the apartment. You came up to 35. I got a little bit more than 35. I thought I got 36, but that can be recalculated. See the 35 or 36 spaces required, and two were provided.
Yes.
And I didn't know here, but, you know, we had proposed that the planning board have some discretion with this number, the required number, but it's not been adopted by the village board, so the only...
I'm not sure about that.
Well, it's not in the general code. Do you know if it's been adopted?
I don't know. You raised it in this memo, so maybe think about it again.
I thought it was, but I couldn't...
But it hasn't gone to general code online. This is the only place I checked for this. So, in the absence of, if it hasn't been adopted, then that means that ZBA has to give an area variance for the number of lot and for spaces. But the alternative, of course, is to rely on municipal parking, which everyone does, and the question is whether that's realistic, whether there's any space left there. And the planning board, though, has that jurisdiction to issue a special permit for reliance on the municipal parking that's available if it concludes that there is adequate parking available in a municipal lot within 400 feet. Actually, I don't know if there is one within 400 feet.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Right. So that is an issue to resolve, whether the planning board wants to hold on to that issue and try to resolve it by reliance, or send you to ZBA to have an area variance.
Or the law.
Or the law. Or if the law has been changed, the planning board can vary it on its own.
Just a question here, how do people are actually counting on the municipal lot?
Just about everybody.
We have, right, we have no idea.
I think the general, if you looked at all the businesses and tried to say that we have to have the requirement of each one added to each other, we would need 1,000 spaces or 500. We'd have a lot more than we have now.
I think you could do a rational study in which you look at the times that the restaurant would need parking, which may be in the evening and at lunchtime, if you're doing lunch and dinner, right? So then somebody would have to get in a chair and sit beside the parking lot and look and see how many empty spaces there are during those times. The only thing I can think of is say, is there actual space available, even though a lot of people rely on it, they don't want to use it. But that's something that was done on one other application, to actually do a parking study over time, and...
Is that with a professional, or did they sit there and calculate?
With a professional company did that study.
The village also did it about seven years ago.
Yeah, there's an old one. But then the other parking issue is bicycle parking space.
Great.
I don't think it's all that in your plan.
No, we'll put it up.
But you'll see that in this memo. It's a requirement for, for every required parking space, every 10 required, you have to have a bicycle parking space. And so I guess if you say required spaces, it's somewhere up around...
36.
36, they would need four.
Okay, we'll do it.
The bulk schedule, you need area variances for the, as you say, for the size of the lot, which is undersized for the two uses. The two uses together require 7,500 square feet, and you've got 2,600, more or less.
Yeah.
And then the last thing you mentioned was, oh, frontage also is the same thing. You need more space than you have in some of the frontage. But the last thing you mentioned was the need for a variance from the fire limit district. Do I have that in here? Fire limit district, Chapter 86. You mentioned going to the ZBA. I don't think the ZBA has authority to deal with that. I think it's the building code issue. Or if it's, and I don't understand what the fire limit district is, I'm sorry, but...
I don't either, but the building inspector brought it up. It's an archaic law based on the previous building code. It was still in the books, so it just, it was a...
Thinking about it. It's just a... Well, it's up to the building inspector to be able to, if he wants to send you to the state to get a ruling on it, I think he can do that, or if he can rule it on it himself.
Yeah, I think they can.
It's not a planning board determination or a zoning board determination.
Okay, great.
So maybe you can get a concurrence from him on that issue.
Which building inspector was that?
It was Rich.
So then, that was really at the end of my comments, and then as far as what we can do tonight, I think, depending on when you consider this to be a complete application, you could refer it to the county and refer it to the ZBA for lead agency. I assume it'll be an unlisted action, but having coordinated review will help everyone get it done more quickly than uncoordinated.
But your email address is RichardMillerArchitect@gmail.
Yes.
Should we just do that?
Question on the bike sidewalk. I would imagine it wouldn't be allowed at the front sidewalk. It would be something in the rear, or is it required to be the bike parking?
Oh.
Could be in the back, right?
As far as I know, it could be on the property, it just becomes part of the site plan.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Good question. Do you know about the bike parking, sorry? Yeah?
Oh, I was just checking to see if there's a location required, because the sidewalk is already cluttered on the interstate.
It's pretty...
Yeah, I would think that that would be a place. On the other hand, maybe that's the...
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I couldn't listen very effectively while you were doing that. So, we went through all these points. Okay. Now, what confuses me now is the, apparently this application was forked to ZBA also?
Yep.
So it's going to be heard at their...
Oh, really?
It's going to be at the, I think it's going to be in the second week of June, which is June 10.
Okay.
And that's for parking and setback?
I believe it was for, I know it was for variance.
Yes, but do you know anything about this?
Uh, no, I thought, I wasn't under the understanding it went to them. I thought you guys had directed, but I'm really happy that it did.
Well, we have to...
But we have, we have...
Yeah, we have to look at it first. We have to make sure there's a site plan that's current and so on, and if we say that there's a variance, that there are variances needed, then it has to go to them also. This also has to go to the county.
Yes. My understanding was it was an area variance for the 7,500 feet and minimum lot size variance, back, those two pieces would be them unless you push parking to...
Well, parking, yeah, it may be that it has to go there if, if the code hasn't been changed the way we think it has, or one of the two.
Or if you want to find municipal parking as adequate. If you find municipal parking as adequate, then it doesn't have to go for any...
I don't think there are 35 spaces in the area total. I mean, how many spaces are in that both of those stuff?
That's not municipal parking.
Well, that's, I mean, well, a portion, a small part of that.
That's not municipal.
Yeah, well, that's part of it. The corner is.
The corner is, yeah.
And then there's in back of the restaurant.
Yeah, but then there's the metered street parking.
Okay, but that's not, except counted in...
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Maybe.
So, I mean, those are legitimate municipal spaces.
Right, so, now, George, we've asked for something like parking studies and peak hours and so on in the past, and I don't know if, if we make the determination, in other words, if the code allows us to use the code as written, as guidelines, instead of, I'm just certain this went to, anyhow.
I know, we need to find out.
If it's, if it is, if it's as written that we have to use what's in the code as a rigid number, then it's got to go to ZBA.
Unless we find that within 400 feet there's adequate municipal parking, unless we, this board finds that. It's this one or the other, it's A or B.
Okay. So for us to do that, I mean, we can do anecdotes around the table of what we see at different hours of the day and night, but we, I think we'd be better served by having some sort of a parking study done by the applicant, so that we can have some hard numbers to look at what's going to happen.
We're only changing the parking number by half. No, because there's already an existing restaurant there.
With two spaces.
Right. Well, I mean, we're not changing the number of tables on the first floor, are we?
No.
Yeah, certainly are, because now there's a kitchen on the first floor.
The first floor was 29 now, or 28?
29.
29, so...
You know, there's not much more than they want. We had...
That's my point.
Would it be a question?
Yeah.
We're not adding that much more.
You're adding 32.
They're 32 on the first floor proposed. There were 29 according to the occupancy sign. I can't...
What's the net difference amount of tables between what currently exists and what's going to be there?
Seats.
And 74, too.
Right, so I'm asking.
The total for both floors?
Right.
Okay. 100 seats are proposed, but the last approval already approved the second floor, so I don't know how many, I mean, I'm just bringing that up.
Yeah, but they never used that.
Okay.
Currently, currently, how many do they have?
29.
So it's about 70 more seats.
70 more seats.
Yeah.
So here's the question.
I was gonna, I was gonna guess it was a much smaller number.
When the ZBA gets it, you're going to have to look at what the impacts are on the community and so on. They may also want to have a traffic study or a parking study, so they understand what the impact could be, whether there's available space now, what, how much of a burden this will be. You're right that they can take into consideration that there's already this many seats and there's many cars needed. But it's kind of the same issue you have here, although yours is, the planning board would only want a parking study to see if the municipal lot is within 400 feet, has adequate space to handle this additional load. That's a little bit different from the ZBA asking the question, will there be an adverse impact on the whole community? I need a parking study to determine what that impact will be. But that's up to the ZBA, what they want to have in the way.
I prefer to go the planning board route then, but that's mine.
Well, if the municipal lot, if it's even conceivable, municipal lot has adequate space at this point.
Well, we have parking spaces down and behind the buildings.
Is the lot next to the Huguenot a municipal parking lot?
What's the Huguenot?
Do you have that?
It is.
No, no.
No, it's private, it's private.
Oh, the Huguenot, sorry, the restaurant.
So with the addition of 70 seats, that means you're going to need 23 spaces, you guys could come up with, so we need to figure out, we need to figure out, sorry, whether there are 24 additional municipal spaces available, key word, during your hours of
If every table is filled.
If every table is filled.
Well, we have to assume that.
Right.
That'd be a good problem to have.
And people ended up waiting there. George, the fact that they are operating now with two parking spaces, and I don't know, I don't know what the original approval was, whether it was a special use permit or, I have no idea what was there. Do you have a copy of it?
I do not have it with me this time.
The original?
You mean the last one that was approved?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
What year was that?
It was about '04.
That's the one that wasn't built, though.
Correct. They started, they did the platter, they did the fence.
So that's all?
Yeah.
So that's all, I'm talking about for the original, for the existing use, or the one before?
Uh, '98, I think that was done. I'm not sure what that, I think it says two parking spaces, but, yeah.
All right, well, anyhow, assuming that there was a planning board, and assuming that they agree that two spaces were enough, what impact does that have on our calculations for what we need for this new use?
I think it would have an impact if they made a determination based on some fact, based on some study.
I didn't, I didn't observe any study.
But it's pretty likely back in the 90s that they didn't have a study, that it's just...
I kept out for anything that happened.
So, but if we don't have that in front of us, it's hard to rely on it, and times have changed.
Right.
There's probably a heavier demand for spaces now than there was then. So I think what John says is right, that if you focus on the difference from what's there now, that now is part of the existing baseline. Somewhere, those people were finding parking spaces. And now the question is, can you add a burden of 24 more spaces? And if you can do a study to find 24 spaces somewhere, maybe the board can do it, it'd be nice, for municipal parking.
Okay, well, we can look into that. I guess I was under the impression that the post office was included in the lot, but it's not.
There's a small portion of the post office lot that's maybe, how many, six, eight spaces?
No, many more than that. It's about, let's see, yes.
The metered ones?
Yeah, I would say it's about 16 spaces.
The metered ones?
Yeah.
It's only the meter.
Okay.
And there's about, it might be 20.
Okay, let's say 16 in this lot in the back.
The lot in the back has five.
Five, so we're at, we're at 21.
Well, it has two handicapped, and then it has six others.
The fact that there exists 21 spaces, you're not the only business in the village, so...
Right, so you have to assess use.
So what time's the post office closes, at 5:00 or 6:00?
At the bank.
So, yeah, so the bank closes, so that, this with the, with the, counting on spaces becoming available, with other things closed down.
Right.
Which, that's how it is, just to go to Yanni.
Yeah, there are private lots, for which there's no formal agreement, but when the businesses are closed, people use the lots.
Yeah.
You've never seen anybody towed as a result of that. But, okay.
Shall we proceed on that path first, and we'll do a tally and take the tape measure out and...
You can inquire with the building department about the parking study that was done.
Okay.
Somewhere around 2007, maybe a little bit earlier, I don't remember exactly. That was a downtown.
That would show, okay, great.
Yeah, it was a downtown parking study.
And where do we get the answer to the, the village board giving us the discretion on parking?
Maybe the secretary can make an inquiry.
Thanks.
Do you know what we're talking about?
Yeah, about the parking statement.
No.
No.
This is, I'd say it's a year and a half ago. We made...
We used it on two occasions.
We made recommendations to the village board that they amend the parking requirement sections of the use code to change the strict numbers to be guidelines that the planning board could use, and adjust those numbers for factors that we can determine would change them, rather than have one. But, but the change has not been effective in E-code, in the web-based version of our code, which I haven't told us up to date, and I have found occasions when I was told that that it wasn't.
Yeah, I'm on section 212-45 right now, and I have to say anything like that, so. But, okay, so I'll inquire.
If the planning board has that authority, they would still need the same study.
Yeah.
To exercise that authority.
Yes.
Okay, so you don't have to go, you don't have to make that a variance request.
They don't have to choose to do that at the ZBA meeting, right? That's their discretion. Right. And I think they can do it again. They don't have, I mean, if they go to ZBA for the area variances, then they can go back to them for parking if they need it, right?
Right. Would that be what you recommend? That would be the best course, I guess, at this point.
We'll have another meeting the first week in June.
Okay.
If you come back here and you have a study or something.
Okay, we'll talk about it then.
We'll certainly know about our local law by then.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so the board can then resolve what to do, and then the following week, you can go to ZBA, or if you have to amend it, you can amend it.
Okay, so were there other things with the, either the site plan or the application that need to be addressed before the next meeting we can consider a complete application?
Can I ask about the apartment on the third floor?
Wait one second. George?
I don't have anything, although I would not consider the study to be part of a complete application.
Right. Right, no, I meant, just as presented to us, the drawings, I haven't gotten anything from the building department that said, that said this is okay, that the application is ministerially complete, that the site plan conforms to their, but I need that. I would like that from them, and Brett is not going to be here until tomorrow afternoon, so I'll see if I can get something. I actually can ask her when she gets back, that we need a...
A memo from Brenda and another from...
The building, she knows this, that both she and the building department are supposed to provide us with a memo saying that the application is complete according to the ministerial, I think?
Ministerial responsibilities.
Ministerial responsibilities of the building department.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll put in the minutes.
That's fine.
And then I'll also email.
Good, thank you. Okay, so assuming that there is nothing else that we need to have changed on this, and we'll know that by the end of the week after the building department and Brenda have seen the minutes and heard what we said. Then we'll just set you up for the June sixth, is it?
I believe it's June third.
I believe it's June thirty-two, yes.
Okay, great. Okay.
We'll stick up for the June third meeting to come back. You'll tell us what you've learned about parking.
Okay.
And we'll tell, you will have learned from us whether the building department has anything on with this. We will do the SECR. If, I think, what will we need to be able to do?
Well, I think you're gonna do lead agency now.
Okay.
So that either thirty days runs or the. How are we today? It's today's, the twentieth.
Yeah.
So it gives a chance to ZBA to say, okay, at their meeting.
Okay.
Right, then we do another one.
So we want, so is this a coordinated review with us as lead agency?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion to, to circulate, circulate a coordinated review, naming us as lead agency? To ZBA for their acquiescence approval?
Submited.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
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 Do we refer to the county at this point or what?
Well, I think we have to have a complete application before you do that. And the earliest we can do, we won't be able to do it for the next meeting, next county meeting, which is on June four.
County meeting is always the day after our meeting.
Oh, first meeting, yes. Not always, usually.
Well.
Sometimes it's before, but.
Obviously, okay.
Yeah.
And then we need a complete application by this coming Friday to be on our agenda?
It, we're, we're not gonna make it for this next county meeting. It'll have to be the July.
I have a question regarding the site plan, since we were talking about parking spaces.
Yeah.
On the site plan itself, summary of existing conditions, such as parking requirements, that there are two spaces existing and two spaces proposed. Do we wanna have some sort of little chat thing to make the calculations showing?
The calculation should be on here, and so what, what are needed? I mean, it's true that you were proposing.
That's what I'm asking, is that since it's not on here, do we wanna say that we want it on here?
I'll put it on there. It's in the letter, but you're right.
Yeah. Do the seating and versus the parking and all that.
Okay, great, seating, good idea.
And do we have a floor layout for the existing building that has tables?
I do not. Tables, I mean, right now they're not there, but we could try to recreate that. That's a good idea to, but, I mean, it was allowed to have twenty-nine seats on the sign, so.
Sign doesn't matter. I mean, occupancy, fire department occupancy doesn't matter or anything. I don't remember there being twenty-nine seats there.
Yeah, I'm not, I could, I could imagine and figure it out. We didn't do that.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I mean, there were exactly twenty-nine seats.
There were twenty-nine seats, you would, no, okay.
Seven with chairs there.
Okay, so that. He parroted the chairs.
You're not gonna use your chair now.
Okay, so that's confirmation.
Okay.
Did you wanna lay out of the new, new space? Uh, do you wanna lay out of the existing as well?
Well, we, we certainly need a layout of the new space.
Okay.
So we can verify the tables and.
Okay, I have that with me. If you, I can bring it next time, make ten copies, etc. I brought the reference because I figured it might come up. It's not on the back, it wasn't the requirement technically, but I brought it in case it came up. So to, to expedite things, so it's. Uh, this, this is roof, third, second, first and basement. So the first floor, we're prepared thirty-two space. Thirty-two seats, there were twenty-nine. Uh, and the second floor has the, the more seats, including the deck, has the sixty-eight, I guess, total. So it's a hundred total. Including the deck, the outdoor area, which would not be full-time. I mean, he's not gonna, I think your plans to close it in or anything, it's just those twelve would not be. Restaurant seats. Yes, restaurant seats.
I don't have my glasses, but where's the kitchen on the third floor?
It's in the basement.
On the apartment?
Oh, his, his kitchen.
Uh, here. It's labeled kitchen.
Okay, yeah.
I haven't, it's, these are general layouts. We're trying to, we're seeing if we get approval.
I answered the question I had before.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's gonna have its own separate address, it's gonna be a separate use kit, regular apartment?
Yes, yeah.
So this is where it came up with the difference. Thirty, if it's a hundred seats, that's, three, because we did that thirty-four times, not thirty-three.
You have to add the, it's thirty-three for ninety-nine and then the extra.
You're right, that's my, my mistake.
One more chair means one more seat.
Okay.
I mean, one more seat means one more parking space.
Okay, so we're at.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Plus, plus two for the apartment.
So it's thirty-six total.
Thirty-six total.
Thirty-six total.
I'll update that. Minus two.
Minus two.
Yeah, minus two you already had, exactly.
So there's no, no bar?
Uh, there's a bar on the second floor, but it's not, he consciously did not want seats is what we're talking about. That's.
So it's a service bar.
Yeah.
How do you handle ADA if you have a bar on the second floor?
Service bar.
Uh, there's a service bar on the first floor. It's this area here.
Oh, okay.
I think it's equivalent, but.
Okay.
All the bathrooms are on the first floor. We're doing ADA women's, women's with two stalls, men's with two stalls and three urinals, that's ADA, so we're, that's, that's the requirement. If we had them on the second floor, we'd have to do ADA on the second floor.
Yeah, okay. He comes home.
I, I called them as you suggested and, yeah, well, we didn't, your intent wasn't that, just because it's, it's so small, the building.
Yeah, it's so narrow, yes.
That's kind of where, can see how much space they, they take up, the stair, take up almost half the space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so access to the apartment.
Access to the apartment, it's required of two means of ingress.
Right.
So that, that's this thing, that's the stair, and it's one stair inside the other, kind of full length. So that also.
Goes all the way up.
All the way up, not opening anywhere else, two exits at the basement level. Up to this exterior.
So that's, that's one, that's two ways in and out of the apartment?
Yeah, yeah. The way I did that is this, this, this exit here, you're required to have half the diagonal distance in the space, so one is here and the other is there.
Oh.
You're allowed to go through, if you have up to two bedrooms, you can go through a bedroom and exit, so that was quite building code.
Interesting.
Yeah, well, we wanna, I, we'd love to go out the front, but it's just so narrow, you know.
Right.
You go through the kitchen, it's just, there's no. I gave plans to the building inspectors. I think he's seen, maybe not these, but those two.
And so the proposal is one restaurant, two floors, okay.
And then you'll invite people up to your apartment for a great key.
Well, you can't physically, they have to walk around the back of the building.
Do you think it's outdoor dining?
Uh, there's outdoor space shown on the, on the second floor. Mm-hmm, it's covered, it's covered on top and it's open on two sides. The stair blocks it completely from the building to the east.
And where Kenny, those seats on?
Yes.
Yeah, those, those are part of sixty-eight.
Yeah.
For the second floor. Nice.
I think the bike rack, we can just put, this is either under the roof, which would be awesome down here, or, so I think we can get that.
Where are the parking spaces?
Uh, the.
They're on the site plan.
This one, and these are, this, these are two of the municipal spots, but one is halfway on this property, which is interesting, so. I guess half space doesn't go that way, does it? For that extra. So, yeah, those are, those are existing.
Maybe you can do a line adjustment to get that.
Oh, that's true. With the village. So this is, this is the comparison. We're leaving the spaces where they are.
And there's a rear entry to the restaurant.
Uh, from this floor, you go through the alley and up into the fry pantry. The rear, yeah, there's a rear exit. I, I mean, yes, there's an exit.
If you parked in one of those spaces, to go to this restaurant, what would you do?
I think one should go around in the front door. I would be right about, um, I don't know if they want for security people, but they could theoretically go.
They could.
Up the stair, they could. The stair, go up, come onto this level, but then you, onto this level, but then you're in the back. I don't know if for security, I don't know, then people are going in and out. It is a student town.
The parking spaces implicitly take into account employee parking, right?
Yes.
Right, so. So those seem more like to be employee spaces perhaps, given where they are. But that's the owner's discretion.
We'd like to see the employees parked a few blocks away.
I know, right, but, but on the other hand, those are.
Yeah. It's like at Home Depot, they all park and the employee's right at the front. Six AMs, that's interesting. They used to.
Okay, are there any other things you want to tell the applicant or ask of him?
I, in the letter, I talked about lighting the alley to.
Yes.
That's on, he doesn't own the alley, but it's, I thought it would, we thought it would be amenity.
Yeah.
To make it more, less.
The apartment's light doesn't go into the apartments.
Correct, yeah, these are, there's a light cut there, it's severe downlights, and the apartments are, they're way high, because that's basement level first, they're on the second, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have an easement to use that alley?
No, that is, that's their property. That building's property.
I mean, we don't have to do the lights, it just seemed like.
The lighting's on, it's on the side of the building, it's on your property, it's, I think it's a great amenity.
Well, that's true, it's on your property.
The lighting's on your property.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if I put the lights on the side of my building, wouldn't it attract my people who wanna use that alleyway? And it's not my alleyway.
I use it.
I use it. I, first of all, I love to see it lit, it's been a problem for many, many, many years. I'm just.
It's ugly and claustrophobic, especially at night, it's awful.
It's terrible, yeah.
It seems like a, it seems like a useful amenity, but I guess the message is maybe you wanna talk to the.
Yeah, sure.
When you get to a space, talk to like property, to the neighbor.
Okay. Right.
You know.
Okay, so we can ask the neighbor.
Ask the neighbor.
If they don't wanna do it, then.
Right.
Do it.
You know, if they like it, you might ask them, just to write you a quick letter.
Okay.
We can add to the file.
And the permeable part, we're suggesting fifty percent increase above village code for permeable space on the property, which is two parking spaces. And the paper cut is in the package, and that's, okay, that's good.
Yeah.
The planter has a, um, a tree in it that I labeled earlier, but I can't remember, but it's doing well. It's proposing putting back, uh, tulips at the bottom, so it'll do better plantings, which is on this plan.
Yeah, that's good.
The dumpsters that were painting the fence, we're proposing repainting the fence to make it look cohesive and clear stuff. The dumpsters are presently on the adjacent property of the west. They're shared, but do you have a letter to that effect or some sort of?
We just have agreement, like, we just share them, we split the price.
It was in the last.
And I, I take care of the fence. If there's damage to the fence, I gotta take care of it. That was the agreement.
Mm-hmm. And it was in the last planning board agreement, it was discussed, but I didn't see a letter on the file, or I don't know, it could be better for the owner to have some.
Yeah, it would be good for you to do that, honest.
Before you sell.
Before you sell.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, or you'd have to use the muscle of a previous board agreement, but I don't know, it'd be better, yeah.
That's why you're here.
Okay.
That's how we pay you the big price. Okay, Brenda mentioned off-street loading facilities. Do we have to consider that, or is that?
Um, the existing parking, this is the existing site plan?
Yeah.
Uh, and the adjacent parking forms exactly the same condition.
Right.
And the kitchen, in other words, loading is over the spaces, so that would occur early in the morning when the restaurant isn't open. Yeah, that's generally when loaded. So they would just back in. The new kitchen is same place, in fact, we're providing a large covered area, so they can load.
Right.
Get stuff covered quickly and bring it into the kitchen. That, that's, that area also has the, we're proposing the propane tanks and other, any other items that we're just sitting outside.
Nice.
Uh, it'll look a lot better.
Everything will look a lot better, is that we're aware of the grade?
Yes.
You don't have to go very far. Okay, do you have any other questions or things you wanna say? Okay, anybody on the board of anything? George?
Yep.
Okay, then, um, you have some homework to do, we have some homework to do, and we'll see you on June third.
Good.
Enjoy the rest of the night, thanks for coming.
Yeah. Did you want a copy of the plans submitted? Do you want a copy now, or I can, I can email it in?
The plan being the.
The floor plans, or should I just bring it to the next meeting for reference?
It would be good to have a PDF sent to us and have the paperwork for the next.
Okay, great.
Okay, I believe we're up to historic evening on the street, am I correct? Okay. So this is an application to the ZBA. And I think they called it a use variance, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which apparently, um, which Brenda didn't react favorably to.
Neither did I.
Neither did George. So, um, there was one piece of business that, um.
George, you didn't react because it was, they called it a use variance, or you just didn't like the, what they're gonna do?
I guess the property is a use variance, but they didn't show any, any of the criteria you need to justify a use variance.
Okay.
I mean, it really requires a change in zoning law, which is.
Right.
Right, so it should go. I can't find the, uh.
You're looking for this.
Condition, yeah.
Yeah, you can buy that.
Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't finish reading it.
Yeah, yeah.
There's also the planning director and George's memo in the draft, and lots of other people for agendas.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Right. So the partner, I saw all of you out here waiting for us, we're gonna be a little slow here, catching up. I know you're busy, but, um, thanks for coming. Thank you a lot. So, um, well, by the way, you're reading, I will just say that we asked the Historic Preservation Committee, which met last night, for their opinion about the application, which is asking for thirty-six double-sided banners that are two feet by six feet. Two feet wide, six feet high. And I think they call it to outline the historic district. And the Historic Preservation Committee has jurisdiction over the area. They apparently don't have anything official to say about whether this is approved or, or not. And we asked them for, for their opinion, but my concerns were, one. And we asked them for their opinion, but my concerns were, one, that people live here, people live on these streets, and if they are with it, then that's one thing, but Mr. Olson, the chair of the Historic Preservation Committee, said that they learned last night that Historic Ugonut Street, it's Ugonut now, did you know that?
No, I didn't know that.
Did you, Michael?
Um, no.
It is no longer Ugonut, I won't say it, it's Ugonut Street.
Okay.
Look, they're gonna take part in a neighborhood meeting on May twentieth, should be this evening.
Yep.
And they strongly recommend that planning board and ZBA consider with great care the outcomes of the meeting. How many neighbors attended, what ideas and concerns expressed, what clear evidence was there of support or resistance by neighbors and the Reform Church. They recommended that, the HPC recommended that HHS develop photo mock-ups showing banners in the streetscape, clarify size, color, scale, placement. The mock-ups could include options depicting fewer than thirty-six banners. We understand similar banners are in use in Stoneridge and other communities, and it may be useful to examine photos there. They asked, or they considered with the applicants, some questions including, is there a possibility of installation on a seasonal rather than permanent basis? Can the number of banners be reduced to only key HHS entry and exit points? And will the banners make noise under windy conditions causing disturbance to neighbors? And I was curious about that too, why not make it just that the boundaries of the, of the district or of Historic Ugonut Street's property? So that you could say that this is the beginning of it, and here we are, not to have to have a reminder every half-block or whatever we leave. But anyhow, so that we can benefit from the outcome of tonight's meeting. I'd like to get an idea of what you folks think we should do at this point. George, do we have any legal? I mean, the idea, Brendan said something about the. She was kind of strong about the use variance thing, that it could even be illegal to grant a use variance for that. What is the situation, and what options do we have?
Well, they've applied for a use variance to the ZBA, it's preferred here, so you have an obligation to respond or else be deemed to have approved.
Okay.
So the.
And we have to respond tonight?
Unless you ask for more time and they grant it to you, yes.
But we will know if they grant it to us.
You won't know that.
They're meeting on the tenth, June tenth, so you still have another meeting before then.
You have another meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
It's considered if you don't get by in thirty days that you consented, so probably thirty days will be left. Anyhow, the use variance is very tough to get, as you all know, it requires that you prove you cannot realize a reasonable rate of return on your property, that the hardship, there's no hardship here, so this, none of this really applies. The required use variance are credible, not all of the essential character of the neighborhood, well, thirty-six banners may follow that character. The hardship is not self-created, well, self-created, putting them up, so there's, the four criteria that the state requires to get a use variance, they don't, on the surface, appear to be any one of them. I did say that in my notes that somehow the ZBA could try to do an interpretation of the zoning law to say that it already allows banners, that this is not what was prohibited. But that is something for them to try to figure out. At this point, I think it's appropriate for the planning board to say, although it's your decision, we don't see how it qualifies as a use variance. As a planning matter, do you have an opinion? I mean, as a planning matter, whether they go to the village board or someone else to get approval. The questions raised by the Historic Commission are your questions, do you have other questions? You could go back and just say, we have questions about this, and we'd want to see more information. Just the way they say, could you do video mock-ups or something like that?
Michael, what do you say? You live in the district.
I do. Yeah, I was actually at the beginning of the meeting before I came here tonight. They invited, as far as I know, all of the neighbors along Ugonut Street and the adjoining streets. I don't know if they extended all the way to town and country, they may have. There were, looked like a couple dozen people at the meeting. My understanding is they were going to have a question and answer session, and that this was specifically, I did, the invitation we got gave no indication that this was what was gonna be discussed. It was more of an invitation to come and meet the new staff, but my understanding from talking to somebody who was, who was actually on the Historic Preservation Commission and is a neighbor, was that that was a main reason for having this meeting tonight, as their letter indicates. So I don't know what the outcome of that is, but I, just informally, there were neighbors who were definitely concerned about all of these issues, about what it's gonna look like, when, you know, how it's gonna change the character of the street and the neighborhood. And so I think these questions are appropriate to ask. I can't think of anything more other than what Historic Preservation, I think it's a pretty thorough memo. I don't know that they've actually even received an application yet, Historic. I mean, the application Historic Preservation Commission refers to is a ZBA.
That's right.
So they, they themselves, but ultimately they would have to, if the ZBA were through some course of action, whether it's a code change or whatever, they would, the applicant would still have to go back to the Historic Preservation Commission with an actual application for this, because that is their jurisdiction, so. They would ultimately be, regardless of how it happens, they ultimately Historic Preservation Commission would have a, be able to say yes or no to the banners.
Yeah, I don't know, you can say something, Rich?
I think we've been very careful about trying to, to look at all the visual pollution coming on from signs, all over.
Yeah.
And we've been very careful to try to develop an ordinance to control signage. This is signage, and it's in its worst, to me, the worst possible situation, that banners flying all over the place. This is similar to gas stations running those little flags all over the place.
Useful ones, or the inflatable guys that do it.
Yeah, big inflatable guys. I mean, this is so far outside of the sign law that it's ludicrous, it's, you know.
Well, it's outside the sign law, and it's, it's a residential area, it's not a commercial area. They have a commercial enterprise, and I don't know, is it fair to call it that? It is, it is non-profit, right?
Yeah.
But, but it's, I don't know, I mean, they have a lot of staff now, they've got an endowment or something.
That I don't know about.
Yeah, I think that's, because they hired a bunch of people, and so they're really pushing to expand this thing, or to make it more something. And I, I'm very nervous about impacting the residents of the area. To have to look at these things every time they come home or leave, or look out the window, and. So I don't know how to say that in a, I mean, we can echo some of the statements, some of the sentiments that Mr. Olson wrote as the findings of the Historic Preservation Committee. I, I wouldn't mind just leaving it at that, and telling ZBA that this is, these are the, this is what we feel. And perhaps more will come out at the meeting tonight that, that we aren't aware of, but we have these, these real concerns about it. And we would, we would.
Well, I mean, if it doesn't meet the use variance, and it doesn't meet the standards for our sign law.
Well, it isn't up to us to say it doesn't meet the use variance.
Okay.
I think, right, and if we can only give a planning perspective, or what, what we think the planning issues are with respect to the application.
That's true.
The ZBA can say, this doesn't meet the use variance guidelines, so we can't grant you a use variance.
So, so we could, we could say it doesn't meet the standards for the sign laws, and we're uncertain about the use variance, therefore we give it back to the ZBA and move it for their direction?
Well, we can say that they did not present an argument for a use variance.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that's.
They presented no argument on which to approve a use variance.
I don't think.
And certainly based on the sign law.
I don't think that's our place to say that. I don't think we have any, do we have any, any legal standing to say that they didn't present an argument?
No. But I think what Rich said before is something you can say, that it's outside of the sign law, which is. There's an effort in the zoning law to try to control signage in this, in this village, and, and.
Especially in the.
This is not consistent with the signage law, I'm right.
Right, there you are.
And that's a planning statement. And you, and this, by the way, this letter was, of all people, not sent to the ZBA, I mean, it's sent to, it's probably gotten to them, but you could formally forward this to them and say you endorse these comments.
Yes.
And you also feel that this is, any variance from the signage law should be taken seriously.
Can I make two more comments?
Please.
One is that I have a, I'm getting a sense that this request is part of a larger plan, that the administrators at Historic Ugonut Street have, are putting together or have put together. And I think it would be to everybody's benefit in the community, especially from a planning point of view, if they would be clear about what their overall plan is. Maybe they'll discuss that tonight or introduce it, but I, I'm concerned that these things are gonna start to happen piecemeal, and instead of, without, from a planning point of view, that's the worst of all possible things.
Yeah.
So that would be one thing, if we want to add comments, is if this is in fact part of a larger plan, we'd like the ZBA to ask them to come forward with, you know.
Comprehensive plan.
A comprehensive, or come to the planning board or make a public, community presentation about that. The other thing is, I'm willing to take the position that thirty, and maybe you sort of did implicitly, that thirty-six two-by-six-foot banners are completely unacceptable in that neighborhood. And that if anything's gonna happen, again, without knowing what their objective is, but assuming it's to greet, make it clear where Historic Ugonut Street begins and ends, perhaps putting something acceptable at the, at the entrances and exits is all that's necessary.
Well, let me just say one thing about that. Properly done, the ZBA can only approve or disapprove a request.
Sure.
So if they've asked for approval for a use variance for thirty-six, and you say thirty-six is too many, they have to deny.
Fine.
And let them come back with some other proposal. It's not up to the ZBA to say, okay, we'll give you seventeen, but not nineteen.
I always mis, I misunderstood that, I thought the ZBA could negotiate a deal.
Yeah. On the variance, they, they have to determine whether it's the least, you know, a minority variance, the least needed and so on. And if it's not, you deny it, and it leaves up to the applicant to figure out what would be acceptable.
That's fine, but I'm still willing to say, as the planning board, if, if there's a majority agreement, that this is the rationale, thirty-six I do too many, if your intent is, and the ZBA can ignore that part, but at least the applicant knows where the planning board stands.
And I'm a little nervous about inviting the current residents to weigh in and use their straw poll or whatever the sense of the meeting was, because it's not just those residents we're protecting, it's the future residents also. It's, it's the district that, now, obviously, the HPC can, can exert their influence and carry on where we don't, but I would like to be on record that from a planning perspective, it's, it's unacceptably large, and should be scaled back a lot, perhaps, to the entry points to the area. But does anybody have any other questions, or would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to make some comments.
Yes, please.
I've been looking, thinking of these flags in a, from a completely different perspective.
Yes.
My first thought when they originally got this request, I guess you wanna call it, of thirty-six flags, is that if we have thirty-six two-foot by six-foot flags dangling from every utility pole in that area, it's going to turn into too much of a temptation for people to want to steal the flags. Want to remember that we are in a college town. And that, that becomes an attractive nuisance. And a lot of those utility poles have a heck of a lot of other wires going up and down the pole itself.
Well, are they playing with flag prism on the utility pole?
Yeah.
Is that, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
The village's approval to give to Central Hudson.
Okay, that's fine.
To pay them to put it.
And then we turn it, it then turns into a safety issue of if it is an attractive nuisance and you have, not necessarily college students, but anyone who thinks that they want a souvenir from Historic Ugonut, Ugonut Street. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm still gonna call it Ugonut.
It's not true.
You can laugh.
Um.
That's what he said.
DeBois, DeBois.
No, they said the French pronunciations are bad, no longer DeBois, it's DeBois, to say. You live there.
There was DeBois if you had money, and DeBois if you didn't.
Oh, right, that might be, sometimes it's split.
Both, Flash, Flash, and Black, I think, more.
Yes.
Yeah. Flash.
Flash.
So, I, I was looking at it from a totally different perspective that, along with, I think thirty-six is kind of way over the top. I think it would also attract activities that we don't necessarily want to attract. Like, let's swipe this sign. We used to have metal signs, I, I thought they were still there, saying stone houses that way.
And they're just state browns.
Yeah, the brown historical things. That are roadside, roadside pole, leather pole.
Mr. Lemon, do you have anything?
No, I've said all these.
Okay. Anything else, Ron? Would anybody like to make a motion summarizing what we said?
Really? Get a shot.
Well, I think we send the letter to the ZBA saying that we do not support the application. Trying to tone down, is what I'm trying to do.
It's okay, you don't have to.
We find it to be a gross. Violation of the signage law.
Incompatible with.
It's incompatible, I like that better. Incompatible with.
You want to say grossly?
I want to say something else, but I had a hard time going for gross. Think compatible with the current signage law. I don't know, does anyone want to add to that? We're not gonna mention the use variance, we're not gonna.
Inconsistent with the nature, with the character of the, of the community there.
Of the neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
Incompatible with the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood.
So grossly incompatible with.
Yeah, grossly.
Not grossly.
Can you all go in the slot?
And we, we would also forward to ZBA a copy of the Historic Preservation Questions.
Can you make a motion out of that? Is there a motion?
I understand a motion.
Okay.
And add to your.
Why is that a motion? Can we read it?
Wait, wait a second, wait one second.
Just add the last sentence to that, that, and we are forwarding the comments of the.
Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes.
With, with which we agree.
Yep.
Thank you.
That sounds like a good motion.
That sure is.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Wait, should we know what the motion is first?
It's on the, you're here, aren't you here?
Where we go?
Mr. Stevens moves to not support ZBA fourteen oh seven, saying they are incompatible with the current signage law and is inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. The board also agrees with the Historic Preservation Commission memo and will forward that to the ZBA. I didn't write that yet, but something to that.
That's very good.
Okay.
It's good.
Good job, Rich.
You have to do it, John?
Oh, I am sure.
Tell that back to like the second then, Rich.
I, I second that motion.
Okay, well, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Cut through another one.
Mr. Rodenhause, I think you can take the rest of the day off. But you know what, I just wanted to, there are all these-
Yeah, inactive applications.
inactive applications that need to be cleared out, and may I?
Can we do them in bulk or we have to do them individually?
No, we have to do them individually, and I just want to make sure, see, you got a copy of these, right?
I think so, yeah.
This is what I sent you this afternoon.
Yeah, we want to do this.
Okay, so it's, it's okay for you?
It's all okay.
Okay, good. Okay, so I'm done, we don't need you anymore. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, it's been wonderful.
Don't lock the door.
It's been nice, Rich.
Yeah. Okay. So let's do those. We have a request for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven applications, correct? Okay, there are seven. So I'm, I'm gonna suggest we do them in bulk, I will list them. And we can attach these to the minutes, to the reference. But I would like to make a motion to direct the, or to recommend to the treasurer and- They're playing the pheromone, they're all- I played the pheromone on, what was his name? The Russian invented. Hello.
Hello.
He came to college in Oakland with, with the pheromone. His daughter played, he was, he was following Steve on the stage, but cute ninety-year-old guy, ninety-five, I don't know. But he, he asked if anybody wanted to, and, yeah, so I, I came up there and he showed me, hold your hands, and I played it and he, uh-
Did you play the Star Wars scene?
No, I don't know what I played.
Is that what everybody plays?
That's, that's the scene from Star Wars, it was played on.
I think maybe it was Luke sixty-six. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the treasurer and board of trustees to close the trust and agency accounts as listed in these seven memos and refund the monies as indicated to the original applicants. And they are for seventeen Mexi Quarters, seventeen Out of Hell, but it is Mexi Cali Blue, Moxy Cupcake, Asian Fusion, seventeen Church Street, two fifteen Main Street, Dex and two fifteen Main Street, No Place Like Home, and Sugar High. May I have a second for that motion? Any discussion about this, any comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you, you have this in you, D.C.?
And you want me to play it out in the minutes?
If you want to cut out the, the specific amounts.
Okay.
I mean, it, it should be part of the public record somewhere.
Okay.
And I don't know, I mean, the easiest thing to do would, to just be the, basically, the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, we have the HPC thing, okay, there's, we have some minutes to do.
Oh, and also-
And we have this thing, the village board. I think you have all gotten the memo that George and his partner Christine Shaw have split away from Report Myers. Report Myers' main office is in Hudson. And George and Christine and Victoria and Dad and Karen have worked in the Reinbeck office for a long time. We started, when we started with them, they were at Poughkeepsie, but they moved to Reinbeck, I want to say two or three years ago. So anyhow, they've split from that firm, and it was, it was just a clean break, because they didn't duplicate any, any work or anything like that. So, so there's a, so we have, we have an agreement with Report Myers. And due to the name change, we should, they have asked us to reflect the view of the planning board as a whole, as to their thoughts of the recent separation of George Rodenhause from Report Myers. Would you please be supplied to discuss this matter as a board, and then make your recommendations to the board trustees by correspondence? So there's, as you can see, there's no change to the players, same phone number, same email, well, we changed the, the memo, but anyhow, it's exactly the same deal. So I, I would like to make a motion that we, we transfer the, the agreement that we have with Report Myers to Rodenhause and Shaw, and continue using George as our village planning board attorney.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're down to minutes, if not seconds. Now, I, I sent a few corrections to the minutes to, to Brogan, and I meant to send it to all of you, and I didn't. So somewhere in here, I have minutes on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you remember the changes in this?
The changes were from, I put, the village attorney says this, and the change was to say the planning board attorney, instead of village attorney, and then same goes for planning director, I think that changed it to village, um, for, um, you know, specific. And then there was another one towards the end, I think, with, I, I said it was fourteen oh eight, but it was actually fourteen oh seven.
Right, right. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve?
No, sir. One other change?
Well, of course. Please.
At the beginning of the minutes, with talking about these banners, you referred to them as two feet by four feet?
They were six feet.
I know, so that should be correct.
I'll jump in.
Good catch. Now, can I have a motion to approve the draft minutes?
So you?
Second.
Has there any discussion, any further discussion? Here you are. May I have your votes, please?
Aye.
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 I have to stand, oh.
Oh, you, yeah, that's right, it's a cookie day.
It's a cookie day.
Yeah, Mr. Cookie.
The cookie was on your- But he had-
Yeah, it was very good, thank you.
Okay, may I please have-
Before we adjourn, I think the, before we adjourn, I think the board ought to recognize Mr. John's birthday officially.
When is your birthday? Twenty, that would be today. No shit, I mean, don't fool him. Let's move on. How was it, do a adjourn?
So moved.
Post the German, sure. Thank you, Ryan.